Welcome back everyone. The board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Present.
Alderman Colder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Bomber.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel.
Here.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Mohammed.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Bakoro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Here.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Twenty-five present.
A quorum being present. We're just so blessed today to be led in prayer by Imam Jahad. It was a great surprise to me. He's a friend, brother, and thank you to the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth for surprising us today with Imam Jahad. Imam Jahad, we're in your hands.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And once again, I appreciate the opportunity and it's an honor to be before such a distinguishing board and to lead this prayer. We want to start off with the name of Allah the magnificent, the merciful. We bear witness that there is no God but one God, the God of Abraham, Moses, Jesus, and Muhammad. We make no distinction between any of them, and may the peace and blessings of Allah be upon them. We say in the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful, all praises be to Allah, the chercher and sustainer of the worlds, most gracious, most merciful, master of the day of judgment. You belong to be worshiped, and your aid do we seek for help. Please show us the straight way. The way of those on whom you have bestowed your grace upon, those whose portion has not brought down your wrath, nor of those who have gone astray. Oh Allah, we thank you. The mercy that you extends to all human being, we thank you for the blessings that we're able to take care of our families. We thank you letting us see a new year come in. We pray that you continue to give us wisdom, give us understanding, and give us patience. We pray that you bless this board so that they be like Prophet Ibrahim in the fire, and that's the fire of criticism, the fire of anything negative that people have to say. Let it be cool to them, and let them understand that they are here to do your bidding. We don't ask, can you do these things? We ask, will you do these things? Protect them, bless them, and give them the courage to stand up and do the things that need to be done for the whole of the city of St. Louis, I mean.
All right, let's give Imam Jahad a big round of applause and thank him. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And I understand you'll be sticking around with us for a minute.
Yes.
All right, perfect, perfect. Thank you. I said earlier, welcome back everyone. Sorry I couldn't join you last week, but we're here today. We're gonna suspend what our regular order of business and take up our courtesy resolutions calendar, all the women from the nineteenth, we recognize on the motion for courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I move that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
Move from nineteenth, second about all the ones from twenty-second. Although Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized for resolution one sixty-two.
Yes.
Actually, Alderwoman from the eleventh, I think you're gonna leave.
Right.
Yeah, Alderwoman from the eleventh, you're recognized on resolution one sixty-two. I think we're gonna work together on that, but if the clerk could read that, and then I'd like to kind of come back to the Alderwoman from the eleventh. Yeah, because I think her video is frozen. Madam Clerk, do you have a copy of resolution one sixty-two?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Resolution one sixty-two, honor and firefighter Benjamin Polson. Whereas it has come to the attention of this honorable Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis of the sudden passing of St. Louis firefighter Benjamin Polson. Whereas firefighter Polson treacherously died Thursday, January the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, courageously fighting a house fire and searching for persons trapped. And whereas he attended Biony High School, was a Missouri State alumni, graduated with the MBA from Drury University, and earned a law degree from University of Missouri, Kansas City. And whereas he joined the St. Louis Fire Department on November tenth, twenty-nineteen, and was most recently assigned to engine house number thirteen, located in, located at Ridge and Shawmet Place in the heart of the Hampton Heights neighborhood. Whereas he was a hockey player, a philosopher, dancer, and a fisherman. And whereas he was also a member of the International Association of Firefighters Local Seventy-three, and was the beloved son of fire, of retired fire captain James Polson, Michelle, and Susan Polson. And whereas he was the best friend and brother to Rebecca Slay and brother-in-law Kevin Slay, loving grandson to Patricia Polson, and was a treasured nephew, stepbrother, and a true friend who will be greatly missed. Now therefore, let it be resolved by this honorable Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to send our condolences to the family of firefighter Benjamin Polson. And by the adoption of this resolution, wish to join in those celebrating his life. We further direct the clerk of the Board of Aldermen to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented at a time and place to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this twenty-first day of January, twenty-first day of January, twenty-twenty-two, by the following honorable Alderpersons. Joseph Bakoro, twenty-third ward, President Louis Reed, Honorable Sharon Tyus first ward, Lisa Middlebrook, second ward, Brandon Bosley, third ward, Duendala Evans, fourth ward, James Page, fifth ward, Christine Iggracia, sixth ward, John Colder, seventh ward, Annie Rice, eighth ward, Dan Gunther, ninth ward, Joseph Bommer, tenth ward, Sarah Morton, eleventh ward, Bill Stevens, twelfth ward, Anne Switzer, thirteenth ward, Carol Howard, fourteenth ward, Megan Good, fifteenth ward, Thomas Odenberg, sixteen ward, Tina Peel, seventeenth ward, Jessie Ty, eighteenth ward, Marlene Davis, nineteenth ward, Kara Spencer, twentieth ward, John Mohammed, twenty-first ward, Boy, twenty-second ward, Brett and Orion, twenty-fourth ward, Shane Cone, twenty-fifth ward, Shemene Clark Hubbard, twenty-sixth ward, Pam Boyd, twenty-seventh ward, and Heather Navarro, the twenty-eighth ward.
Thank you. Thank, hold on, hold on for a second. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And it is Megan, Megan Green. I think it may have come out Megan. All right, I just want to make sure it's noted for the record. Alderwoman from the eleventh, you're recognized.
Thank you, President Reed, and thank you colleagues. I would just like to make the announcement that the Board of Aldermen and staff came together and so far we have raised over fifteen hundred dollars for Backstoppers in honor of firefighter Polson. And I would like to recognize Chief Patel, who has joined us today from the Backstoppers Organization. And we will be sure to send that donation. I know some folks haven't had a chance, so we'll continue collecting up until next week. But I just think it's really nice that we've all come together and are able to make this donation in honor of firefighter Polson and his family. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman, would you like the chief to speak?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Chief Patel, are you there? Do you see him online anywhere?
I do not. I know he did let the clerk know that, um, that he did receive the link.
He may be running behind. Any further, first I want to thank you all the ones from the eleventh and you Aldermen from the twenty-third for all your work on this, and Alderman from the eleventh, your work in, in going out and collecting this money and having an idea of putting this fund together. I greatly appreciate it, and I know the Backstoppers, you know, also appreciate it deeply. Those funds that they distribute go to a really good purpose, and at a time when families are really struggling, you know, in the midst of a loss. So, so thank you and all the members of the board and everyone who made those donations. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-third, did you have anything further?
Well, yeah, I just want to say to the entire board, thank you. I mean, as a group, there wasn't any hesitation when Alderwoman Martin said, you know, just, it really didn't have to call everybody. She put it out. Had the secretaries put it out, and no one hesitated. Everyone said, yes, I want to be the same as, we didn't have to say, let's do it in bank, because every Alderman, the president and all, signed on to this, and it is a group. You know, I just want to say thank you. And, and, you know, it isn't that often that, you know, we get good press, but I did hear on KMOX, you know, Channel Four, they at least made the announcement, the Board of Aldermen did the resolution for the firefighter. So I just wanted to thank everybody on the board. What a great group, and that we all were able to come together. There was not even one holdout in the group. So that's all my only comment. Thank you all for everything.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Yes, Mr. President. On behalf of the Black Caucus, we supply food to engine house number thirteen during their time of grieving from losing their firefighters. So I just wanted to let everybody know, and the Black Caucus contributed tremendously to support their firehouse.
Oh, excellent. Well, thank you all for that. Thank you all for that. Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the eleventh, do you have anything you want to say in closing?
No, I just want to thank everyone. Thank you, Aldermen from the twenty-third for organizing the resolution. And I really, it's so tragic that firefighter Polson, you know, left us so young, and really, what an amazing testament to public service. I'm just so impressed that he went on to law school and earned an MBA and came back to serve his community. And we certainly need more folks like him, and I really think that a lot of times we're sort of lost on what that type of public service means. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I wanted to take a minute to recognize the Elamene family are here today. And of course Imam Jahad, who was so graciously accepted to come and lead our prayer this morning. And I would like to introduce resolution one sixty-four.
All right, please proceed, Alderwoman.
One sixty-four is in memorial of Arthur Elamene, who was not just a neighbor for us in the twenty-sixth ward, but he was also a builder. And when I say builder, I mean it in the word of building, literally, and in the word of building. Figuratively, I'm getting a little hotter because I like family to me, so let me just, um, Arthur Elamene, Arthur Elamene and his wife, Miss Stella Elamene is on the column, her children. And resolution one sixty-four is in honor of Arthur Elamene, who in so many of our communities, we can look around and see the challenges. Some people up and move away, some people never look back. Arthur Elamene not only built homes for himself and his family, and they say they also built homes for others like myself, who, if not for them, might not have had the first step and the opportunity to build generational wealth for my family. So for that, I would like to take the time now to recognize him on one sixty-four. And if the family or Imam Jahad had any more they would like to say about the amazing person that Brother Arthur Elamene was, please do.
All right, Imam Jahad, would you like to speak, and then we'll save the family for last?
Yes, this is again, once again, good morning to everyone, and it is an honor also to, it was an honor to be summoned in a Muslim community. I've been put in the position, whenever a male transition, I'm almost gonna be the one almost all the time to get the body, and there's a tradition that we have where we wash your body, we wrap it, you know. And it was an honor to, to do that for Brother Art Elamene, because I've been knowing him for a long time, and just like the resolution that's being adopted in his name, he was a builder. Not only did he build homes, he also built up people. He was a person that would help anyone that he could. He would always give good guidance, good advice. He was just well-rounded, just a good person. So I think it's really fitting that there, there is something in, in, so when I got the call, I thought it was, it was, it was something that was needed. So I'm just honored to know Arthur Elamene. I'm honored to be the one who had presided over his eulogy, his, at his service, the one who washed his body. And I'm just grateful for all the memories and all the things that Brother Art did, and I hope that we all can look at his life and what he did and try to do as much as we can also to help community, our community.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Brother Imam. Ms. Della Elamene, are you there?
I am here.
Oh, perfect.
I am here.
I didn't see you. Please, please proceed.
I just want to say, when I got the call from, when I got the call, Shemene letting me know that you guys are doing this, my heart just melted. I'm just so appreciative and thankful for this honor that you guys have bestowed on my husband. It is so difficult trying to forge a hit without him. Everything we did, we did together. And he changed my life. So I just, again, I'm sorry. This is more difficult than I thought it would be, but I'm just so gracious, so appreciative, and thank you all so much.
Thank you for, thank you so much for joining us, and please accept all of our heartfelt condolences. You know, Brother Elamene left a legacy in his building, you know, across the city of St. Louis. I've heard so much from people who have had an opportunity to come in contact with him, people who have lived in properties and, and, you know, worked with him over the years. And it's just been just tremendous. This resolution is the highest honor the board has to give any organizational individual. And what it does, it cements in time some of that individual's many contributions on behalf of the city into the permanent records of the city of St. Louis. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when you research the records of the city of St. Louis, you will be able to read about the legacy of Arthur Elamene. And that he left such a significant legacy that on this day in history, we pause in our deliberations to assure that he was properly recognized. We will be praying for you. We stand with you at this most difficult time. Everyone at the board, please join me in a round of applause of love and caring for God.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. Alderman from the twenty-third.
I just, you know, I just want to say that, you know, my prayers will be with you this evening. Death is just always such a hard thing, you know, and, and, you know, it's just a hard thing. My prayers are with you. Just, just know that even with this, his, his, his heart, you know, his, his life is in the heart of many people that he helped. And that, you know, sometimes we get, you know, we don't, we don't have an expiration date, and we're all gonna be there one day. But just know my prayers are with you and your family.
Thank you, Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. My brother Imam is here.
Yes, sir.
In our, in our culture, in the religion of Islam, in his presence, it is only appropriate that I begin off. Bishmila Rachmanah Rahim, alhamdulillah, rebil alameen, rahmanah rahim, malaki yomendi, iya abu da iya kana sini, sarat taladina amatma lahim, diirel magduviya lahim walaf dhuwmi. Thank you, Brother Imam, for being here as we honor the legacy, the contributions in the sacrifice of Brother Arthur Elamene, who was a tremendous figure in the St. Louis community for all the work that he did. And that his family will continue to do. His life is a testament to, to the goodness of St. Louis. It's a testament to, to, to everything that is, everything that makes St. Louis home and what it is. And my prayers are with you and with the believers at Masid Al Mu'mun, and with the Elamene family. To Allah, we belong, and to Allah, we all share with him. Thank you for the beautiful prayer, Brother Imam. And Mr. President, I would like to move that we make this resolution.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-first, resolution one sixty-four, and bank second about Alderman from the twenty-third. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please create another copy of this resolution and bank to the, to the Elamene family and to Brother Jahad. What that means is that all Aldermen have asked that their name be added to this resolution, which is a significant thing and is a significant honor in showing of support for the family. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. To the family, I just wanted to give my personal condolences. Through the years, I've had an opportunity to be in the background and watch and learn. And most people don't realize that we don't have that many African Americans who really have the whole picture when it comes to development and also have the will to help others, training others, engaging others when they come here from another state looking for work, embracing them. Those are the kinds of things that you received from a kind gentleman who was very determined and very knowledgeable. So, oh, so I just wanted to give you my personal condolences, and he definitely will be missed. And I'm hoping that we can all collectively bring our various talents together and try to fill in the gap. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman. Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you recognize the clothes.
Thank you. Thank you for all the comments. It took words out of my mouth. I honestly, like my sister Della, Elamene, I got a little more chuffed than I thought I would, because just thinking and reflecting on the fact that, you know, twelve, we built our house over twelve years ago. And who would have known, you know, just that was my first exposure, but learning all the other exposure, the legacy level, we met in daycare, you know, you just never know how God works to connect people. And now to be able to serve and honor, honor him the way we are today is, is, it's got, it gets a little overwhelming, and I think that we take some of these moments here at the fore for granted. So thank you all for this, to the Elamene family, you know, I'm right around the corner, and I'm right here, if you need me, to any of you, and with that, I've called on regulation one sixty-four.
All right, thank you. And it's been moved, and second, that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. To the Elamene family, we stand with you. If there's anything that we could do here at the Board of Aldermen to help you during this time, please, please let us know. And I know all of us are just so grateful to have had an opportunity to have been, had our lives and our communities impacted by Arthur Elamene and your entire family. Thank you so much. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest. Before we go to introduction of our guest, my honored guest today will be none other than Heather Navarro, because this is her last meeting. And I was looking through the agenda, trying to find if there's anything that you're carrying today that we can vote down, so. But congratulations here, Heather. Let's give her a big round of applause. Heather, you're all of our special guests today. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, to your colleagues. My honored guest of the day is none other than my perpetual fiancee, Casey Davidson, who's celebrating his thirty-first birthday today, so. Seems here at the.
I wish I was thirty. You said that thirty-fourth or thirty-first?
Thirty-first.
Oh my God, it was thirty-four, thirty-one.
Thank you.
All right, great. Any further introductions, any for Alderman from the twenty-third?
I actually have two of them today. My, my good friend Greg Meyer is always is my honored guest. And I also, you know, I'm gonna put Rachel Littman in as my honored guest today. I always see on Facebook the, the descriptions of the meeting and our background, so. She's watching, because I see it come up on my thing here. So those are my two honored guests today.
All right, welcome. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, Greg Myers is my special guest, not the Alderman from the twenty-third, but I would also like to have as my special guest, Mr. Brian Rogers, who is the Vice President for the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials.
All right, welcome. And but before we wrap up, let's go back to the Alderman from the twelfth. I don't know if Alderman truly wished his partner a happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Stay. Happy birthday.
There we go. So Alderwoman from the first.
I would also like to wish the Alderman from the twelfth's partner a happy birthday. I had an incident with my automobile fob. I guess it was, was it last week? And so don't let your fob go down and your battery goes down. But the Alderman and his fiancee came with their super cape on and helped me with a hotwire my vehicle, which I don't know how to hotwire. But your car doesn't start without a fob, a battery in your fob. And so that taught me a lesson to keep extra battery in my fob. But super, the two Superman that showed up was the birthday guy and the Alderman from the 12th. And somehow with tools, I don't, I still don't know what I did, but I was able to hotwire it and start it. And the people at the dealer said, how did you do this? I don't know anything about that, but somehow we did it. And I wanted to thank the Alderman from the 12th and his super fabulous fiancee. And I'm going to tell you, you better put a ring on it. I'm a wifey, okay? You need to put a ring on it. All right. And tell him happy birthday. And I appreciate every time I see you all. We have conversations in the parking lot often. So again, thank you for all your help and wish him a special happy, happy birthday. And if you can't take him out someplace special tonight, you should be cooking and providing all kinds of grubhub takeout.
All right, all right. Any further, any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap this up. Hold, hold on a second. Alderman from the 4th.
Yes, I, my special guest is Julia Allen, who is an advocate for the bill. She is very knowledgeable. And I just want to announce her as my special guest.
All right.
Right.
Any further announcements, any, excuse me, any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap this up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we gather here January 21st, 2022, this is National Sweatpants Day. So I'm sure most of you are taking advantage of that while we're at home. Also, on this day in 1970, the first 747 flew from New York to London. But more importantly, in 1981, time travel was invented when John Delorean created his first car. Thank you very much.
Oh, wow. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, January the 14th, 2022.
Alderman from 10th, you recognize on approval of minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move, we approve the minutes from January 14th, 2022.
Move from 10th, seconded by Alderman from 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Reporter City officials.
Reporter City officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Aldermen's mailboxes.
Right. We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal accounts? Anyone like taking bills or resolutions off of any of our informal accounts?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to take my board bill off of the informal calendar is.
145.
Floor substitute.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place board bill 145 floor substitute at the end of the regular third reading count.
No noted.
Would anyone take, like, take any further bills off of any of our formal accounts? Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal accounts? We will dispense with line items eight through 10, first reading of board bills. Well, hold on for a second, Madam Clerk. All the one from the six, did you have a bill you wanted to introduce from the four today?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I believe board bill 166 should be in your folders under first reading. I'd like to make a motion to introduce that from the floor.
It's been moved by all one from the six. Intertend a second on the. Moved by all one from the six and seconded by.
15.
All the one from the 15th. Any, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules for purposes of introducing board bill 166. Madam Clerk, please call it row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Negracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye, the first time, I'm sorry.
29 ayes votes.
By vote, stay in motion. All the one from the six, suspend the rules for purposes of introducing board bill 166. Madam Clerk, please place board bill 166 at the end of our first reading calendar and assign it to Health and Human Services.
So noted.
First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 161 sponsored by Alderman Page. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, circus, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in an irregular portion of conference place to appoint said areas being part of a cul-de-sac in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 162 sponsored by Alderman Page. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, circus, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in North-South Alley and the Western-East-West Alley in City Block 271 as bounded by Cole Tucker Martin Luther King Drive and 13th Street in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described with a court, in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 163 sponsored by Alderman Howard pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71395. An ordinance directing the direct of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the 4900 block, 5,000, 5,000 block, 5,200 block, and 5,300 blocks of Sutherland Avenue as herein after prescribed. Board Bill 164 sponsored by Alderman Negracia, Alderman Davis, Alderman Martin, and Alderman Calder. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the city of St. Louis establishing public works and improvement projects within the city of St. Louis from Shuttle Avenue to Washington Avenue, from Shuttle Avenue to I-64 and River City Casino Boulevard to Dover Street, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 165 sponsored by Alderman Calder, I'm sorry, Alderman Vacaro. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Apportement, authorizing the police commissioner on behalf of the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute an agreement with the RTI International to extract all crime incident reports maintained by the Department for offenses occurring 2015 to 2023 with the specific data outlined in the contract and authorizes the police commissioner or his designate to enter into contract and expand the funds to the extent received containing severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 166 sponsored by Alderman Negracia. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Apportement, authorizing the Department of Health to accept COVID-19 response grant assistance through the epidemiology and laboratory capacity enhancing detection expansion award up to $1,444,604 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for the grant purposes of providing funding assistance with local efforts for COVID-19 related responses, authorizing the expenditures of ELC, ED, expansion grant funds for the grant purposes and to fulfill obligations of said grant and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the street committee, board bill 161, 162, and 163. To the HUDs committee, board bill 164. To public safety, board bill 165. And to Health and Human Services Committee, board bill 166. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of HUDs committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 130 sponsored by Alderman Peel. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on June 9th, 2021 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from J Industrial District to H Area Commercial District in City Block 3962, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block 3962 and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 148 sponsored by Alderman Davis. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December 1st, 2021 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the J Industrial District and the K unrestricted, unrestricted district to the K Industrial District only on two parcels in City Block 2214, three parcels in City Block 2231, two parcels in City Block 2233.18, and six parcels in, in City Block 2243.18, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block 2214, 2231, 2233.18, and 2234.18 and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Streets Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 142 sponsored by Alderman Davis, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Switzer, and Alderman Peel. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, circus, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in the 15-foot-wide North-South, North-South Alley in City Block 1881 as bounded by Aldine, Grand, Cass, and Spring in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
We'll dispense with line item 14. Perfection consent.
Board Bill 138 sponsored by Alderman Howard. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated October 26th, 2021 for the 5336 West Avenue area. Board Bill 143 sponsored by Alderman Boyd. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November 16th, 2021 for the 4201 rear Geraldine Avenue area. That is the extent of the perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from 10th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Move by all from.
Second.
14. 14. All right, seconded by all, all along from the 14th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. We'll dispense with line item 16. And. Line item 17, third reading, report of engrossment.
Board Bill 145 floor sub sponsored by Alderman Davis and the following Alder persons. Howard, Gunther, Rice, Peel, Negracia, Norrian, Navarro, Switzer, Middlebrook, Evans, Page, Stevens, Mohammed, and Green. An ordinance providing for and directing the submission to the qualified electors of the city of St. Louis at a special bond election to be held in said city on the 5th day of April, 2022 of a proposal for the incurrence of indebtedness and the issuance of general obligation bonds of said city and evidence thereof in aggregate amount of not to exceed $50 million upon the ascent to the said proposal of two-thirds of the qualified electors of the city, of said city voting thereon and containing an emergency clause.
All the ones from 19th, you recognize on third reading, final passage of board bill 145.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt board bill 145 floor substitute.
Moved by the Alderman from the.
14.
Seconded by Alderman from the 14th. All along for 19th, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, this board bill has a u, a utility reason in order to assist with projects that we have under our maintenance and capital improvement needs. So I think every Alder person received a letter of explanation. So hopefully everybody understands why this is being done. And also, um, it, it does, it does have a need, but it's not an emergency need. So, um, I'd like to, uh, end with that statement on that board bill.
All right. Any further, any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by all one from 19th, seconded by, uh, all one from 14th, that was third reading, final pass board bill 145. Madam Clerk, please call it.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Negracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
29 ayes votes.
By vote, stay in motion. All the one from the 19th and third reading, finally passed. Board bill 145 floor substitute.
Thank you.
You think, you're welcome. Anything further, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
That's the extent.
That's the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
First reading of resolutions.
We still have to.
Oh, yeah. All other businesses being suspended, the president shall an open session of Texas signature here to, to then that these may become law. That was for the.
145 floor sub.
145 floor sub. We will go to our first reading resolutions.
Resolution 163 sponsored by President Reed and Alderman. Resolution one sixty-three sponsored by President Reed and Alderwoman Ingracia. Health Commissioner's Order Number Seven for COVID nineteen.
All one from the sixth, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt resolution one sixty-three.
Second.
All right, would you like to request unanimous consent?
Yes, I move that we um pass resolution one sixty-three with unanimous consent.
Second.
Let's start off. I just just requested unanimous consent, then we'll do the motion right after that.
Sorry about that. I'd like to request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, Alderwoman, you now recognize, would you like to make a motion to adopt it?
I would. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution one sixty-three.
Moved by all one from the sixth. All one from the first and Alderman from the ninth. Any further discussion, any further discussion? All one from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, as we are continuing to be in a significant peak uh for COVID infections that has reached higher peaks than we had even last year, I would love to um request that we pass this resolution in bank.
Moved by all ones from the eighth.
Second.
Again.
This resolution in bank seconded by, I think, all the one from the twentieth and all the one from the sixth, any discussion? All in favor, signify percent aye. Pose. Motion carries all along from the first.
Um, well, my discussion was going to be, we have been doing such a great job at the Board of Alderman, making sure these uh resolutions get passed and we keep our mask mandate, which is very hard when you have a uh the governor and attorney general out there taking a very opposite position. But I would request that Dr. Echoes get these things in a little earlier because of but for a few times that we've been able to just uh been able to make sure it didn't happen, we would not have had a mask uh a mask mandate. And so I would just ask him if he could just get this thing done a week earlier. We know we're gonna have to do them. And I guess my question is, do we have to do them now every twenty-one days since the governor took that emergency thing away? And that's my question I was gonna ask before, but we already passed it. But if maybe the Alderwoman from the eighth might be able to answer uh yield to my question.
All one from the, oh, all one from the eighth will yield a question to all the one from the first.
Um, I think the Alderwoman from the sixth might be the better to answer. Thank you.
That's what I meant, the sixth, I'm sorry.
From the sixth will yield a question to all the one from the first.
I will.
All one from the first, please proceed.
Alderwoman, do you know now with the governor removing his uh emergency portion, do we now have to do this uh mask mandate every twenty-one days?
We are doing it every twenty-one days, yes, now instead of thirty. Um, and if it's helpful information, uh Mary Goodman, I'm sorry, yeah, Mary in um Lewis's office, Kevin Bailey in the mayor's office and I are staying in touch with each other to make sure that we get these in on time.
Right, but but you know, since we know we need them, he could just do them a lot, a week earlier. And then we wouldn't be having to do emergencies, uh or I'm sorry, introduce them from the floor. So I'm gonna put a call to him, nobody else will, because um I don't ever want us to be without a mask mandate. And I don't want to give the people at the state even one day of satisfaction that somehow we don't have this. I'm glad that the uh that they lost in court as far as uh as it goes to the county, we need these mask mandates for people who don't believe it. We actually do need them. I appreciate you sponsoring the bill and thank you. Um, I don't have any further questions. Mr. President, I have no further statements.
Right, thank you. Um, any further, any further discussion, further discussion? Second reading.
Resolution one thirty-nine sponsored by Alderman Ballmer Mount Fire, Mount Fire Properties LLC in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Uh, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on second reading, resolution one thirty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, this resolution is in regard to a new development on uh Filer Avenue. Came out of committee with uh it is going to be a heavy rift brewing company is going to expand their their business and put a new brewing plant and restaurant combination in this area. If you're not familiar with it, it's on Filer right off of Kings Highway up from the Quick Trip. It'll be on the north side uh and it is going to have uh an average of forty-five to fifty employees there. When done, we're talking about a multi-million dollar project uh that uh is going to be a benefit to the complete area around there. I'm open to any questions, sir.
Any um any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from tenth, uh, all the one from the sixth. Uh, all one from the sixth.
They're muted.
I have a quick point of order.
Oh, yeah.
Um, did we pass the resolution for the mask mandate? It was just the motion to a bank.
You did the most, uh, you did the motion to yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take up, we'll take up another motion on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. All men from the tenth.
All right, sir, uh, hearing no questions, I.
Uh, did you have any question on this resolution?
No, no question, just a comment. Uh, just wanted to uh state my support for this uh resolution. Uh, Heavy Rift Brewing Company is uh over in the twenty-fourth and Dogtown. Uh, they are a fantastic member of the community. They pay great wages. Uh, people who are just kind of, they've become really a community gathering place in the ward. And uh, you know, basically everyone in the neighborhood knows uh the folks that work there. Uh, they truly are uh great uh uh corporate neighbors and I'm, I'm really excited to see them uh expand, so I'm very much supportive of this.
All right, uh, Alderman from tenth, would you like to make a motion to adopt the resolution one thirty-nine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all from the twenty-fourth. And they are staying in the twenty-fourth ward with their current uh facility, so they won't be abandoning. But I would make a motion that we adopt resolution one thirty-nine.
Then moved by all from the tenth, entertain a second.
Second.
Seconded by a little bit everyone.
It's beer, who wouldn't?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries that we adopt the resolution one thirty-nine. Back to resolution one sixty-three, it had been moved by all the ones from the sixth, seconded by the all ones from the first and uh the Alderman from the ninth, that we adopt resolution one sixty-three, just to clean everything up. All the one from the first, from the sixth, I recognize you again, just to restate that motion to adopt resolution one sixty-three.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt resolution one sixty-three.
The move by all.
Second.
Second.
Seconded, seconded by the all the one from the twenty-seventh and uh the Alderman from the twenty-second, I believe. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify percent aye.
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 Aye. Pose. Motion carries. This line is an unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, January the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, Quax will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Streets will have a meeting at ten AM via webinar. Public Safety will have a meet at one PM via webinar. Friday, January the twenty-eighth, full board meeting ten AM via webinar. That's the extent of the announcements.
Hey, uh, Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize? And the floor is yours. Take as much time as you would like.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everyone. Um, as you all know, this is my last meeting as the Alderwoman of the twenty-eighth board, and I just want to tell you all what an honor it has been to serve not only the twenty-eighth ward, but also the city of St. Louis and to work alongside each of you. Nobody knows what this job is like until you get into it. And to do it well, you have to care deeply about our city and the people who call it home, and I know that each of you do. It has been a privilege to be able to work on issues that improve our city from public safety to health, housing, climate resiliency. Um, I also want to thank all of the staff at the board and everyone at STL TV. Um, especially these last two years, you all have really made our work possible. And STL TV, you make sure the public can follow us and participate. And I also just want to give a little shout out to a great video they did of the twenty-eighth ward um recently, so watch it while it's hot, while there's still a twenty-eighth ward. Um, it really does sum up everything that I I love about um about the neighborhoods that I've been able to serve.
All right.
It's okay if I keep, I'm sorry, I can't tell if somebody's trying to jump in.
Oh, no, please proceed.
Okay, sorry, thanks. Um, so I think most of you know this new position I'm taking is with the Midwest Climate Collaborative, and it's going to allow me to continue serving my community and our city by focusing on an issue that affects everything that that we do. Um, no matter what committee you're on here at the board, um, I would argue that it's touched by climate change. So as the city at the confluence of our country's two greatest rivers, and I know a lot of you are sick of me talking about this, but really, we are just at a really incredible place um here in our country. And we are going to see tremendous effects of climate change. And while our location here brings specific challenges, it also brings great opportunity. And I look forward to working on these issues with all of you in the future and other local governments and stakeholders across the Midwest in in this new role. And I have to say, as excited as I am for this new opportunity, it's it's still not easy to leave because I know that there is so much work to do. I imagine anybody who has to move on in this role, you know, leaves with a long list of of items that are in, that are incomplete. Um, and like many of you, I drive around the ward and I think, oh, man, we still need to trim those trees and I'm still waiting to get that dumpster replaced and that sidewalk some needs to be fixed. And so I know I will still have CSP on speed dial. Um, I am really proud, though, of the work that we accomplished to get the map passed. Um, I'm very excited um to have been here for that process as, you know, as crazy as it kind of was for all of us. But I am really proud that we were able to get that done. Um, and I know, however, it is only the beginning of the work that that needs to be done when it comes to reducing the ward. So I will be watching, probably not from Zoom on Friday mornings, but but I will be looking forward to the next steps because this is a really important body when it comes to serving our residents and making progress in St. Louis. And I'm not just talking about the city, but but for the entire region. So I'm really honored to have served and I wish all of you the best as we all work in our own ways to make St. Louis a truly outstanding city. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you. And uh, there are a bunch of hands up. Sorry, I did not make note of who first. Start from top of the list and go down. All one from twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, so Alderwoman Navarro. Uh, congratulations, which is probably the millionth time I've said it to you and how excited I am for you and the work and and it's exciting most to see someone be able to work in where you know their passion lies. And just know that we would definitely um be here still standing in the gap for all the work that you are doing, you know, as well as a couple of other people. I had other plans for today, but in your humility, which I have the utmost respect for, you um said, let's go a different route with this. So now you're just gonna get this love fest with all these hands and everybody just gonna say it themselves. But um uh truly, what I um, being new on the board and us being neighbors, literally, I just want to thank you if I have publicly before, if I always answer the call, always um being responsible to the need, um, when our neighbors that live directly across the street might have needed something, agreed or not agree. When you and myself agreed or not agree, still being able to come together and serve together and be an example of that. Um, in in a ward and in wards that have um so many divides in them, I think that we definitely show that uh we can be connected and we can work together. So thank you. You never, uh, well, I know that I'll be your Alderwoman, but who knows, you know, I'll be your always. So I'll be answering your calls all the time, every time and I will come running, but even in not in that capacity, whenever you call me, I'll be there. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. All the one from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, Alderwoman Navarro. It's been an absolute pleasure getting to know you from our time before you got at the board, working on river issues. Your bravery um coming out with me on the Mississippi River in the Missouri during one of the highest floods. Um, paddling through a levy breach. Um, you are brave, intelligent, creative. You have an amazing sense of humor and an unparalleled passion for our city. You will be sorely missed here, especially with your environmental work, but I wish you the absolute best of luck. I cannot think of a better advocate for the resilience we need um and the the creativity we need in problem solving for crap, climate change in this region. And so know that I have your back. Please bother me, please put me to work and um looking forward to your next adventure and following along. Thank you so much.
All the one from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, members of the board. Uh, Alderwoman Navarro. It has been um not only a pleasure, but it's really truly been an honor to serve with you. Um, you know, your dedication to public service is just, it's unparalleled. Your attention to detail, your willingness to not only dig into issues, but to listen to opposing sides, not only with um open ears and a willingness to pay respect to uh our role as a public servant, but you know, to change your mind. You've always walked into issues with an actual open mind without any agenda other than to do the right thing and to do what uh, you know, is right by the public. Your compass, the, that which guides you is is just been unwaveringly pointed in the direction of the public well-being and um the public good. And and for those reasons, it's been a true honor to serve with you, and it's been a great pleasure to share in this role. Uh, it gives me an enormous amount of pride to call you a colleague um and to have worked through some very difficult issues with you over the years. I'm inspired, I continued by your dedication and your tremendous work ethic and um and your humility. Um, as you know, as we all know, uh, this board, the city um is, I have no doubt better for your service. Um, and I know that I am a better person for having served with you at this board. And I will truly miss serving with you, to get choked up. But your service is just truly unparalleled. Um, and um, um, it's a great honor to call you a colleague and to call you a friend. I thank you for serving our city and um I join my colleagues in wishing you the best in your new role and look forward to many more years of working together with you to make our city, our region, of course, the Midwest a better place.
Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, I'm, I'm looking at her letter and I don't think that this signature is really hers. I think we should just send this to rules. I'll talk to the Alderman from the seventh, the chairman. I think that we need to investigate this a little bit more. No, seriously, congratulations, Alderwoman. Uh, I wish you the very best. My mother used to always say, when you fight with someone long enough, you eventually start to love them and care for them. So I wish you the very best in your new endeavors, uh, you and John. And who knows, maybe we'll see you back here sooner than we think. Take care.
All right. All right, from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh, members of the board. Um, Alderman Navarro, it, I can truly say again, it's, it's been a pleasure serving with you. I found you to be someone who's very thoughtful, someone who's honest, somebody who's passionate about the city of St. Louis, not just the twenty-eighth ward. Um, somebody who's willing to listen, somebody who's willing to compromise, somebody who's willing to make the right vote when it really matters. Um, in spite of all the pressure to be part of a group, I really admire that about you. Um, I think oftentimes I've heard people say, oh, well, we can't count on Heather because of this and that and the other. And I say, well, you really don't know Heather. Heather is gonna vote her conscience. And I think um those should be guiding principles for all of us that serve as elected officials, whether you're at the Board of Alderman or you're the governor or the President of the United States, governing yourself with good principles and good values matter. Even when you may not be on the winning side, even when you have to stand alone, it's okay. And I appreciate that about you. And so thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve with you and sit down with you and learn from you. And I wish you nothing but success in your future endeavor. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, uh, like to just congratulate uh Alderwoman Navarro on uh the new gig. Uh, wish you the best of luck on uh all your future ventures. Uh, I hope that this board uh continues to uh carry on the environmental work that uh you've pushed.
I hope that this board continues to carry on the environmental work that you've pushed for. Very successfully during your time here. And just wanted to let you know that you're not going to get away from us that easily. Because I'm definitely going to be reaching out to you to lean on your expertise on environmental issues as we move forward. So best of luck and it's been, it's been a pleasure working with you and getting to know you. And I I wish you all the best on the new gig.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me scroll through to find Alderwoman Navarro, there you are. The fun, fun part of being on Zoom, right? But I want to look at your lovely picture as I thank you for being the sort of emulating. Something that I hold very sacred, which is the Athenian. Looks at public duty and governance. You have, in this role, forever strive for the ideals of both our city and our state, our environment. You have unceasingly sought to quicken the sense of public duty and the sense of public pride, pride in St. Louis and our rivers. I will miss our river conversations, Heather. I'm, I was so excited to do river stuff with you and I still am. You've left our city a better place, both in terms of the environment and in terms for your constituents, getting those trees trimmed and your sidewalks fixed. You are one of the reasons, one of the inspirations for originally running and I would not readily admit that. Out of a sense of, of, you know, keeping certain things private. But you are one of my inspirations to run for this seat. And you remain an inspiration. And I I am very disturbed in that we won't be able to work as colleagues at the board any longer on our green legislation. Not many here know that I would bother Heather at all hours of the day and night with outlandish thoughts on Alderman Gunther, too. With outlandish thoughts on how we could better, better repair our city for a new environmental future. Everything from putting solar panels in our parks to putting solar farms somewhere, I very frequently went to solar. To what if we put little hydro turbines in the river? And Alderwoman Navarro has always been very quick to point out the very obvious flaws in these these giant plans. But I, you know, I I had this whole little spiel planned. And I'm I'm just very sad to see you leaving this capacity. I'm so excited to see you going into the next capacity. Thank you for being an inspiration. Thank you for being the public servant that I want to be. And please don't forget us little people in this new grand role. Your work is so important and I will, I will miss our late night texts with that, I'll be back.
Right. All the ones from the fourth.
Thank you. Heather, I just want to thank you and congratulate you on your new position. I want to thank you for your service to the, to our city. I won't forget seeing you out, supporting other wards. And I know you will continue to do so. I just wish you the best in all of your future endeavors. We're gonna miss you.
All right. Alderman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As opposed to calling you all, I went from the 28th, Heather's. The only time we're supposed to be doing this is when you're, we're there. Congratulations on your new endeavor. Thank you very much for your time here, especially for the last few months when we served on the legislative committee. Two and a half months we'll never get back out of our lives. But you made, you made it a a better process. You served during one of the most historic things that will ever occur if you don't always have that in your, your back pocket when you've got to go in a meeting and say, hey, uh, can you figure something out? Say, hail, I helped figure the most improbable thing out in the world. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you. We'll miss you, Derek.
All the ones from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Heather, congratulations, congratulations on your new job. And I sorely missed you when I saw that letter and my heart just fell. Because I appreciated working next to you, alongside you in terms of just physically, because our ward's a butt. And we were moving forward with the King's Highway safety issues and the congestion. And I learned so much from you when we met with our constituents together. And you have been much of an impact here on the board. And I saw that with the legislation committee and the redistricting and how thorough you were. And I appreciate everything that you've given to the Board of Alder and the city. And congratulations, and I will tap on you in your new endeavor. Thank you.
All the women from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. It has been an honor to serve with you, Alderwoman Navarro. I have learned so much from you. You have been just, I think, a great sounding board for so many of us. You really have embodied public service. I know that you have worked so hard, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And always thinking about what's best for the city. And I, at first, I was sort of selfishly seeing this as such a loss at the board, which of course it is. But I think it's a huge win for our region and really for climate change. Or tackling climate change in general. And I cannot wait to see what you will do with this new position. Best of luck and I know we'll still continue to talk. Thank you.
Right. All the women from the 13th.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board, Alderwoman Navarro. I think, you know, there's so much to be said, but at the end of the day, it's really just saying thank you. You have been such a great role model for me as I start my time on the board. I remember when I was thinking about running and reaching out to different alderpeople to ask them, you know, their thoughts and what they thought made a good alderperson. You know, you said, work hard, care about your constituents, you know, try to do the right thing. And I I feel like it was simple advice, but it was absolutely spot on. Because you've shown us all that doing the work isn't necessarily easy. It's not necessarily always, you know, you're not always on the same team with all the same people all the time. But if you do it with a sense of honor and and caring about your constituents first, then you'll, you'll do a good job. So thank you for being such a wonderful role model. I'm so looking forward to what you do and continue to do for our region. And I really appreciate your time and your service. Good luck.
All the ones from the 19th.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. To Alderwoman Navarro, I wanted to just share with you that. I really respect your way of debating issues. As you know, I don't mind a good debate at any point in time on any issue. And I like the way that you always would retool and come back with a different approach. Because you didn't have to get mad about it, you just simply put it in your mind, okay, you don't hear me now. But you will when I come back with my next platform. So I appreciate that and I know that's what you'll do in your new role. It will become evident that there is a true need. People will be paying attention and you will be getting our attention from this region. So best of luck to you. Always use all those tools that you know are out there. And that includes this Board of Aldermen to assist you in being very successful. Godspeed.
All the ones from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. And I, I got a little emotional this morning realizing this was our, our last meeting with Alderwoman Navarro. And I just want to say thank you so much for stepping into this service. Thank you for, for taking the time out of otherwise amazing professional career as well to step into this. Because public services is no joke and and taking the risk to run for Alderwoman. To, to step into this role for a time that you, you gave greatly of yourself. And there, there's a wonderful legacy in that. Thank you for your systems thinking, for working really hard to prepare us for the changes that is to come to this legislative body. Both in, you know, the, the attempt at the committee a few years ago and with redrawing the lines this time. Thank you, thank you for that service. Thank you for, for putting the environment first. Thank you for helping make St. Louis a leader in our, our building codes, both for, for solar and for electric vehicles. I mean, I, I'm hearing about this for around the country, you know, that, that St. Louis is, is leading in this. And I, that's in no small part thanks to you and your, your vision for us. So I'm, I'm excited for this new role for you as well. And I hope that you stay in close contact to let us know what we can do to continue putting the well-being of St. Louisans first. As we move into a new climate challenge. Thank you, thank you for caring, thank you for being here and we will miss you greatly.
Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Alderwoman Navarro, good luck. Thank you so much for your service. I'm grateful I got a chance to know you and serve with you. I will say what I appreciate most about you is the different perspectives you brought and the professionalism that you exuded. While you were an Alderwoman. You and I probably didn't agree on many things, but I appreciate the, the way that you brought a different perspective to both me and and to the board. And you will be missed. Good luck.
Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, Heather or Alderman, well, I guess you're still Alderman to the end of the day or something. It, it really has been a pleasure to work with you. It's hard to fight with somebody who won't fight back, though. He just smiles and then it's like, I, you know, I know. And, you know, because we've, we've never, we, we're sometimes we're on the same side, sometimes we're on the opposite. But usually a little fire from somebody that's on the opposite side, but you're more like, oh, okay. And, yeah, it's hard to fight with somebody like that. But anyway, well, God bless you and and you're in my prayers and enjoy your new job. Thank you.
For the 27th.
Okay, Heather, you know you're not going anywhere. That's, she's laughing because she know we already started our projects. And so thank you for helping me to take my committee, the Parks Committee, to another level. Because it wasn't just parks, it was parks and environmental. And so we are looking to do some things in regards to environmental. So I thank you and I thank you all the way back to when we were fighting with this war reduction. Trying to get information, trying to understand it. And so you and I was a tag team, we was trying to make sure we was making, making the right steps. And so we did make it happen as a Board of Aldermen. And so I think that we all showed that we can work together. And it wasn't about if we agreed or didn't agree, we just worked together to try to make one solution for our city. So thank you, Heather.
Thank you all. Alderman from the fifth. Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Pardon me and indulge me for a moment while we step into the Wayback Machine. I first met Alderwoman Navarro back when she was Executive Director of the Missouri Coalition for the Environment. And we were colleagues in environmental issues. I with the Sierra Club, I with the Missouri Clean Energy Coalition. So I met her back when she was doing the early stages of what she's going to do with her new assignment. While we will miss her sorely, as a member of the Board of Aldermen, I'm happy for her to have the opportunity to return to her true home, working on environmental issues. All the best, Alderwoman Navarro. All the ones from the, a bunch of Aldermen still have their hands up, all the ones from 11th. Did you have your hands up or was it, did you not take it down yet? All one from 11th. All right, all the ones from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm Alderwoman Navarro. I want to thank you for your services and congratulate you on your new position. It is because of you now, when I'm out even just purchasing or looking at vehicles, I'm like, oh, you know what? This isn't good for the environment, you just pop up in my head. So I want to thank you and and my children want to thank you because there's never a moment where you don't ask about them. And they're able to tell me when I'm not recycling right now. But you, you actually have had a big impact on me, on my ward. Because from learning from you, I take that information, I give it to my residents. I'm like, listen, you all know, I, I, I got this, I learned this, you know, this is what should happen. So thank you so much and continued success.
From the third.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So again, Heather, thank you very much for your service to the city and everything that you have done thus far in helping us progression and moving forward. I know throughout the years, us all, sometimes we go back and forth. We got a lot of things going on and us trying to prove a point and trying to point our seat in the direction that we best think that it should be going is as individuals. But you most certainly have been a good team player throughout these years and one of the people whom we know for sure. Answers the phone number one, but also, you know, you can have conversations with and and get a real understanding of why decisions are being made. Based on that person's realistic understanding of what it is they know about. Or personally, what you know about, what you know about. So I certainly can appreciate you in that capacity. I appreciate, once again, the service that you provided. I appreciate your family allowing us to have you, this definitely adds years to us. I got grades now, we all are getting a few of them here and there from the different issues that we deal with. Because we are constantly problem solving, that problem solving every day. So I definitely look forward to you in this new capacity, going out and problem solving within our city and region and trying to figure out how we can be the continuing, to continue. Space where people are looking at as being a front runner in renewable energies. And looking at how it is that the city, once again, can progress utilizing technology. So, you know, I really appreciate having the chance to work with you. I look forward to you doing great things in life and in the future, please don't hesitate to reach out. As an Alderman, I'll reach out to any Alderman who calls me back always, pretty quickly. Because I know we have a lot of things that we're doing out here, a lot of relationships that we've built here within the board. And, you know, it's definitely important for us to bring those back when we see ways that we can connect the city with other services. So I appreciate that and definitely look forward to working with you in that capacity. Hope this relieves any of the stress that this job has brought and gives you another leg up in life. Where, you know, you, you see yourself and your family growing continually and forward direction. So, uh, once again, we appreciate your service. Thank you very much. And you have not a wonderful life, but a wonderful new beginning.
Excellent, excellent. All the ones from the 28th. What can I say? You know, I think back 21 years ago when I first came to the board and I was the crazy environmentalist that people. Rested Alderman, like, oh, no, he wants to talk about the environment. And putting in bike routes and leash laws and all those things. And, you know, how can we best, you know, shape the city's budget to begin to lead the way? As this, you know, as the city on some of these environmental issues. So seeing you come to the board was a breath of fresh air. And I've appreciated it because you stepped up and just took the lead on all of those issues. And I think back on your time, you know, at the board, because you stepped into the breach and really represented us well on the environmental issues. I'm not, I haven't had to do much on the environment since you've been here. You, you had to see the time before when I was pushing those things and trying to rally votes and stuff for it. All of those things have changed now. So you have been a change, a change agent for the board. Think it was all the ones from the 20th, maybe wrong, that talked about the fact that being an Alderman is more than a notion, right? May have been all the ones from the 20th, but it is, it is more than a notion. It is a difficult thing to put yourself out there to, to, you know, go, especially in today's world. Deal with ridicule and everything else that comes with the elected office, being a mother and. being a mother and, and also working professionally to try to change things in your profession at the same time, do those things at the Board of Aldermen. That is a full plate and then some. So on behalf of residents that may not have the opportunity to thank you, I want to thank you. Your legacy at this board is secure. You've done some tremendous things. And for those of you who are watching, who have never been on the receiving end of something that Heather's working on, she's gonna, she's gonna, she's gonna push you in the morning. She's gonna push you at night. She's gonna push you at three in the morning. She's, when she's on it, she's on it. And she does not let up until, until the project is done. And I appreciate you. You made redistricting. You were one of the key people that helped make redistricting work, and I, and I'm thankful for that. And, you know, keep doing what you're doing. You have a legacy at the Board of Aldermen that will not be matched anytime soon as it relates to environmental issues. So I'm putting a call out for various different Aldermen who are, one of you all needs to step up on the environmental stuff and pick up the mantle where, where she's left off. So congratulations on a job well done. And we wish you all the luck in the future and your future endeavors. But I don't think you'll need luck because you have talent and you have real skills and intelligence. Let's give her a big round of applause. All the women from the 28th.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you. You are all much too kind. I've really just been trying to keep up with all of you. And even specifically on the environmental front, when I got down here, I thought, okay, I'm going to be the environmental champion. And I think the day that I got sworn in, we were passing the clean, the clean energy resolution. And so I got down here and I realized, well, there's a whole bunch of folks who have, you know, been caring about these issues and pushing them forward. So I have no doubt that you will all continue in that, in that work. And I'm not going very far, so please, all of you feel free to call on me if I can be of help. And you'll definitely be seeing me again as I continue to advocate in this new role. And I'll be taking so much of this knowledge that I've gained about local government and bringing that to, to the greater Midwest. So I'm excited to learn what other cities are doing, share all of the great things that we're doing. And, yeah, you're, you're not done with me yet. You just probably won't be seeing me in one of these little boxes for a while. But it's been a real pleasure. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You know, one thing that we did not get done while you were here, 21 years ago, when I came to the board, I tried to change the committee structure. I said, environmental matters needs to be a committee by itself, and parks need to be a committee by itself. Oh, Lord, Jesus Christ. They were about ready to throw me off the balcony at the board back then. Have you lost your mind? Yeah, but, but I wish we would have gotten that one done while you were here. But congratulations again. Any further, any further announcements? Any further announcements? All the women from the 26th.
Oh, I didn't know I would be the only one, but I would be first. I just want to quickly announce that it's that time of year again. Colleagues, thank you, Mr. President, the Diamond David, you know, the organization that I work with a lot in against domestic violence here in the city of St. Louis and in the region as well. It's their ninth annual love packages time, and right now we're gathering donations. You hear me talk about this every year. You can either donate full-size personal hygiene items, or you can donate to two death at two death.org/donate. They have a cash app at dollar sign two death. Their goal this year, you know, that we know that these goals stretch with everything that's going on and with the pandemic and everything that's going on. So their goal this year is 2,500 love packages. The love packages are, again, full of full-size personal hygiene items and things that we donate to different shelters and centers and need centers and transition for survivors of domestic violence that a lot of times have to leave with nothing but what they have on their back. So having their own bag with their personal hygiene items, you wouldn't believe how much difference that makes. So again, two death.org, you can look it up at two death.org. They're getting ready to, they're collecting donations, and we'll be looking forward to popping up over there in the 21st. But Aldo and Mohamed will pack the love packages again this year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, all the women. All the women from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Couple of quick things. Today is the 49th anniversary of the Roe versus Wade decision, which legalized safe abortions for folks here in the United States. And it may be the last year that we have that decision that stands. And so I just want to thank everyone who was working so hard for safe medical treatment for those who, who need it, particularly here in Missouri where it's difficult. And I want to make an announcement. There, there, as these temperatures have dropped, our unhoused neighbors are looking for support. I mean, there are a couple of ways that people can get involved. Either us here on the board volunteering our time. It shifts for a shelter. And there's one that's popped up, the St. Louis Americorps are running a, a shelter down in Sewellard, I believe. And there's another one in the, around Grand Center that is also open. St. Louis winter outreach is active and needs volunteers to make sure that folks are getting blankets and services and outreach over these cold drops. So please consider volunteering if you can and getting involved, donating some money or putting out the word for other folks who are able to, to share their time. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the Alderwoman from the first ward for her yes vote on the motion to excuse last week. I apologize that I was also not able to be with you, and I appreciate having a yes vote on that motion to excuse last week. Thank you.
Excellent. All women from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm given an early notice on an event that's going to happen in February, but I'm going to also send it out in noted form for you to have. The Harris Stowe University is partnering with Black Men of Education, and they're going to have a vaccination and job fair event on February 26th. That's a Saturday from eight to 11:30 a.m. But the most important thing they want is to have as many people as possible who can come and talk with folks and help guide them on their path to having a better quality of life. So there's going to be a lot of information shared there, and as many of us that could stop by, even if it's for just 30 minutes or an hour, it will be very, very helpful. And so Harris Stowe and BJC, they are partnering to put this program on, and I'm very excited about it because we know that education on whatever level it is, is the most important thing. So we're, I'm just putting it out early, but I'll continue to send information out as it gets near. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, all the women. All the women, all the women from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to ask members to please check on your senior neighbors. It is very cold outside, and a lot of times we find that they will heat their homes up with their oven. So please, I had a neighbor that did that. She was 100 years old at the time. The, the heating bill was a little pricey, but, you know, that's not safe. We know that that can lead to carbon monoxide poisoning. So please check on your neighbors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, all the women. All the men from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It's my understanding we have a celebrity birthday next week. I believe Alderman Dan Gunther is celebrating his 25th birthday on the 27th. So happy early birthday.
Yeah, happy, happy early birthday. Right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? I'd just like to close and tell everybody, thank you for bearing with me. Right at the third reading counter, my ink pen died. I was warming it up in my hands, trying to make it work. It wouldn't work. So I appreciate all the women from the sixth. Point out for me that we need to go back there. So thanks to everyone for making this meeting a good meeting. And all the women from 28th, let's give her one more big round of applause before we go into excuse.
Unmute your mic.
Yeah, unmute.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. So Alderman from 10th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm happy to report that in one way or another, all of present are accounted for today, sir.
All right. You recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we will adjourn to, oh, my Lord, that will be when? January 28th, 2022.
Alderman from the 10th, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, sir.
Could we allow the all the one from the 28th to take us into the adjournment?
Sure, as long as she brings everybody by and they all buy her drinks later on.
All the women from the 28th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Okay, hopefully don't screw this up. I move that we all adjourn and you all reconvene next week on Friday, January 28th.
All, break it up. About all the one from the 28th, entertain. Was that Dan? Look, Dan Gunther seconded it. It's been moved and seconded that we move by all from 28th, seconded by all from 29th, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify or say a aye. Motion carries. Right now, congratulations.